He flung, he flung him before.
So why don't we just turn around? We haven't left the yard yet exactly.
Oh, they did, okay.
Oh, yeah, that might be funny when it works.
Yeah, you said they were there.
No, he seems like he does. Except for when he wants to actually drive me.
I had one, I've got all the way here.
Especially at night, oh my goodness. This kid here, he could drive during the day. I think he could drive to California and nobody's bothering. A boy would hit him behind it when it's like at night and it's like you're going ten miles an hour. I'm not kidding you. It's like you're in a fifty mile an hour zone and he's going like fifteen. And I'm like, buddy, you gotta pick up the pace a little bit and it just gets crazy.
I'm like that now.
And his eyes are fine.
And like, I mean, it gets dark and I'm immediately going, there might be a suicidal squirrel. Just waiting.
There's a lot of deer in this little mall. I think we're gonna work it like three or four in the morning. You know, just way to go, way to slow down.
Yeah, right there. They're all, they would come out this time of year and that field there, just before you come down the hill by hand. They all hang out with the.
And they sit there and go. Yeah, and all the hunters driving by.
Drummers are down there, right? They have that, yeah. Where that guy has that little house. Yeah, right down that hill.
Where they, yeah, they hang out between there and the Dodge Road.
Yeah.
Where they put all that construction in there before you get to the back of the field then. That's where I hit my gear. With my motorcycle.
Oh, really?
That's a bad day.
No. I had my truck.
We should all do it.
Didn't he go down?
I run a rescue with you at my house.
Took out his, took out his rear leg.
Oh, I got one.
Didn't need to put a fracture on my leg. And then went right over. Cop coming, I said, I wonder if he's.
It's been a really long week, Will.
I said, I told him I was lucky I was on a two wheeler, not a.
I know. I might have to close the rest of the week.
It's been a long week, it's Tuesday. And?
It all blends together anyway. It didn't do no damage.
Sorry. Oh, but I get to.
What?
To the truck anyways.
I'll go like six.
That's true. You're a liar.
I said, I was doing about forty-five.
I'm working twenty-three hours a week.
Sure came out.
I have. Yeah.
I had one come in, who's that on four ninety-five?
I'm gonna do that now, you know. Subconsciously. It'd be funny if we all did it.
I'm thinking, why aren't there people here with pitchforks and torches?
Oh, they wanna know what I didn't want to.
That's what I was expecting. I was expecting pitchforks and torches.
Join us for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to declare this public hearing here and open. Now, do we need, we gotta re-read the warrant or? Do we just?
Open the questions?
Does anybody have any questions on the warrant? I mean, it will be posted around town and we're available to answer questions.
We're gonna be voting up here as opposed to the fire station. That's still the plan.
Yeah, that's the, one of the amendments we need to make on at the regular meeting after the hearing.
Yeah, so that'll be something different this year. Seeing none. Do we have no questions? None? Then I declare this public hearing closed. So, up next, we'll move right on to the select board meeting. Approval of minutes. I wanna, will you go ahead and the approval of the minutes for February eighteenth? Does anybody have any concerns on that? No. I move we approve the minutes for February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. I got the year right this time.
Second.
All those in favor? We're missing Jim and there was, John and I were not here for that, so it'd probably be best to table those.
Yep.
So I'd like to, I may move we table the minutes for February twentieth, twenty twenty-five, the joint meeting and a special meeting.
My second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Old goodness, amend town warrant article.
So Sharon caught my boo-boo in article fourteen. I believe it was. I forgot to include the five thousand dollars for the Jug Hill Riders, the donation. So the proper, the correct amount should be forty-five thousand, two hundred, seventy-five dollars. And we did receive word from the Secretary of State's office that we can do the voting here instead of at the fire station. Do you wanna elaborate on that, Doris?
I did ask for permission to vote over here, bring the voting back over here now that we are better set up. We have what we need to run the equipment and more outlets. We've changed our restroom so that it's handicap accessible. And they had absolutely no problem with us doing this. For the change for voting here to make life much easier and simpler for us. And I do have forms that I will be filling out to send to Augusta and they will come and check and make sure everything is sufficient for November. Well, any state elections.
Now, will it be just come in and then set up like a partition and have them walk right back out the same way?
Yeah, they said that they can use the same door, so that's not a problem. And we have stanchions that we can use. We have the outlets now for our DS two hundred machines as well as the booths that have the lights in them.
Okay.
And we have enough room so that we can be just better set up.
All right, well, that seems like it'll be a lot more efficient when you were saying you had to run back and forth the registry stuff.
It's, it's very hard and with everything that I have to bring, we have to bring over to the fire station, it's just, you end up, you know, beginning a tape dispenser or stapler or, you know, whatever. You just don't have everything that we need, so.
Yeah.
And then we have our ballot drop-off outside.
Right.
And we have to come back over three or four times a day to check that, so it's just going to be more efficient.
I would move that we amend the town meeting warrant to change the voting location from the fire station to the town office. And that we amend article fourteen from, to include the five thousand dollars for the Jug Hill Riders.
My second.
All those in favor? Opposed? On the new business, we have bid openings. Twenty-two Gaglin Street, you were saying there's no bid on that?
Correct.
Would this be an appropriate time to consider adding it to, or do we wanna talk about that later? If we haven't got any bids on it?
That's up to you.
How many of these don't have bids?
Two of them.
Which, what's the other one?
One Hundred Main Street.
You can put them out for sale like what?
Well, we could add them on to, what's the company's name?
Missouriian Associates.
And add them on to that to see if they could try to sell it. As opposed if we're not gonna be getting any bids or we can extend it out for a little while longer.
I'd say we could change the minimum bid amount, so that's up to, up to you.
Is this something Ken's aware, Ken's aware of, Kenny's aware of that we?
Yeah, he actually happened to call today, so I did tell him about it. It's hard, the, well, the minimum bid was, you know, was substantially higher than the other two, two lots. And they're, they're point one eight acres. And according to our new development standards ordinance, you have to have ten thousand square feet to put a structure on it. And this is just a smidge under that ten thousand, so anybody would have to apply for a variance to put a structure on it.
How big of a deal is applying for a variance?
Bill?
She's looking at you.
I don't know. I think, I think it just has to go in front of the Board of Appeals, right?
Yeah.
Cause the planning board came through that it has to be through the Board of Appeals, I believe.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're right, yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I, I think it's, you know, the document, you'd have to look to see what they wanna do with it, I would think, to see if they need setbacks and all of that.
What their intention is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know how small, I haven't looked at them, so I don't know. I know one of them's only twenty foot on the back. Line that I looked, it's a triangular shape. It's quite deep, but it goes down to twenty feet back, so. Yeah, I think, I think the planning board may look at to see if they meet setbacks requirements and such and then. But I think, I think you're supposed to automatically go to the appeals board for, for variance. So, but I, I gotta study up on that one more.
Yeah, well, someone had asked that question when they were contemplating putting in a bid on one of those lots. And they asked about, you know, a tiny home because, you know, there is potential that you could meet all the setbacks if you put in a tiny home, but you still have to meet the ten thousand square foot minimum, so. Yeah, so we.
So how would that work? Somebody buys the property, then they go to the planning board to see if they can build on it or, I mean?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question.
I don't know if I wanna invest money into something and then not know if I could build on it.
Yeah, that's a good question, so, yeah. Maybe, yeah, I don't know, maybe we need to do a little bit more research and figure out.
Right. Table it.
Cause I would think that'd be the first thing, the potential buyer would be asking Kenny was, is what's the setback and what's, what can I put on here?
Right. Kenny's due back, I think, week after next, so I'll have a conversation with him if you want. You can bring it back if.
Well, I'll move to a table, twenty, twenty-two Gaglin Street for now, One Hundred Main Street. And then next would be bid opening for One Hundred Main Street. We didn't receive anything for that one either. Is that also a small lot?
Yeah.
Well, I moved to table bid opening for One Hundred Main Street until we get some more information. Up next, we have bid opening for Ninety-five Park Street. Oh, sorry, I didn't.
You made two motions in those seconds.
Sorry, do a second.
Might have put one in Coogee.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All those in favor? Get excited. Oh, mine? I heard, I heard the second and everything in my head, so. It was already.
Oh, those voices again.
Oh, they get the best of me some days, you have no idea. All right. Bid opening Ninety-five Park Street. There's some talk about some other options we might have for this property. Is that?
Yeah, we still need to open the bids.
We still need to open them, all right.
And which, is this the one where the burned-out house was?
Yes.
Yes.
Pulling a knife on.
Pulling a knife, huh?
Take a, take a place like this and have a letter open.
I feel threatened for my life.
Well, I pull out my spring blade, the people would have to freak out.
So we have property bid. Joseph Y. What is?
That looks like young.
Oh, all right, I was like, what is that, a percentage mark? Young.
It is quite something interesting.
He has a bid of two thousand dollars. No intended use at this time, is unsure of it. Under the statement of experience and capacity to complete intended use plan at the cost of the demolition and cleanup, I feel this is a valid offer. Not sure if that necessarily meets everything we're asking. So that's two thousand.
So there's no intent of use?
Unsure at this time. So, I know we were kinda pushing to have an intended, something intended for that. Up next, we have Peggy Turner. She has put in a bid of seven thousand, ten dollars.
Seven thousand and ten?
Seven thousand and ten. Cleanup, statement of intended use plan, clean up the property from the fire, put a home on the property. Under experience and capability, I have read through your town ordinances, I have managed buildings for many years. I have built and purchased many buildings throughout my lifetime. Know plenty of contractors. I have always completed what I started for projects successfully.
And her last name was?
Peggy Turner.
Turner.
We have seven thousand and ten.
Wasn't the appraised value like at nine thousand?
I honestly don't remember.
Or the assessed was at nine thousand?
Right.
Sounds about right.
Was a considerable amount for cleanup.
Yeah.
Up next, we have Diana Flag. She has put in a offer of thirty-five hundred dollars. She has listed, I, Diana Flag, am submitting this statement to outline my intended use for the property located at Ninety-five Park Street, Littlemore Falls, Maine. My objective is to construct a tiny home on this property for personal residents. My experience in, you know, statement, my experience and capacity successfully complete the tiny home with a background of building, remodeling houses, also built three salons. I have personal financing, I have the ability to oversee the project. I am knowledgeable about zoning laws, building codes, and permitting processes required for tiny home construction. So those are three bids and proposals. Now, what did we, what did we set for a minimum bid for that? I can't, you remember?
Oh, I should have brought that in.
Oh, I should have added with me.
Yeah, let me go grab that. Are there, or did we get rid of those?
No, I think we got rid of them.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Maybe yours has one.
Probably bringing it anywhere. So, I mean, one obviously significantly higher, almost double than what the other ones are.
No, one is double, but.
Intended.
So you can.
Now.
So you can, you can table it and, you know, give Jim a chance to, to try it as well.
What I was gonna suggest, I'd really like, you know, Jim's input on, I'd like the full board in on this.
Now, do these expire, these bids? Do we have time?
Yeah.
If we went to full board. All right, what are we doing on this one? So, we have two that are over the minimum bid, one significantly over. I am okay with tabling until we can speak with, have everybody's input, and that's more than fine with me. This. All right. Well.
And is there, was there a deadline to get the bids in?
Five o'clock yesterday.
Five o'clock yesterday, okay.
I won't be in the meeting. Well, maybe privately you can convey us that, or we can figure it out. We'll talk about it. I'd like to move that we table the bids for Ninety-five Park Street until our next meeting.
My second.
All those in favor? Not opposed? We'll discuss that a little further when we have everybody's input. Up next, we have a bid opening for a corner of Park and Leeds. Stick all these away. We have a good number of bids on this one, so.
Do you wanna put all those together?
Where's the other? Oh, why'd you do that tonight? I don't think the, there's, I don't think there's anything noticeable, hopefully not. Nothing on the envelope, but you can switch one or two, so that's all right. It shouldn't matter. All right. You got your blue hickey?
Oh, don't throw me that.
That's pretty fancy. First bid we're gonna open is for Charles W. Barker. Map five, well, five, he's put a bid amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. intended plan use. I intend to consign, combine with my property to make two, two, uh, conforming lots, two square lots. So, first one is for twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars for Charles Barker. The next one we have is for Sherry Saint Armand.
Saint Armand.
Saint Armand. They've put in a bid of twenty-four hundred dollars. I read that right? Did you see twenty-five thousand on that? Make sure I didn't read that wrong. I see a comma.
Twenty-five thousand, five hundred.
So Sherry Saint Armand, twenty-four hundred. Was this the input for that one?
Yeah, the pink.
Diana Flag has put in a bid of twenty-five hundred dollars. Submitting this statement to outline my intended use for the property located in the corner of Park Street and Leeds Road, Littlemore Falls, Maine. My objective is to construct a tiny home on this property for personal residents. Experienced capacity successfully complete the tiny home with background of building, remodeling homes, uh, three salons, personal financing, the ability to oversee the project. So she has listed twenty-five hundred dollars. The next one we have is Scott Tibbetts has put in a bid of forty-one hundred and one dollars. Looking to build a one-bedroom house. Has twenty years of building homes for experience and capacity. So, four thousand, one hundred and one dollars. Up next, we have Joseph Young. Is put in a bid amount of sixty-one hundred dollars, looking to build a trailer lot, have developed multiple lots. Sixty-one hundred dollars for Joseph Young. We have Kalen Nolton. She's put in a bid of three thousand, one hundred and six dollars. No statement for intended use, no statement of experience. Thirty-one hundred and six. And our final bid is Peggy Turner. You put in a bid of ten thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Plans to build a home. I have knowledge on, yes, I have knowledge on how to build a home, water septic, I have resources. Peggy Turner, ten thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Now, we've opened all of these. As is the other one, Jim is not here. We do have one bid that is well more of what we've asked.
What's the value of the property?
Which one was it? It was map four, five. We put a minimum bid of twenty-one hundred dollars on it, so.
Anybody owns the joint property?
Yes, yeah. He owns everything right next to it.
Right.
So, I would imagine, like you said, they would just be putting into their lots and making it part of the association, is what I would imagine. So. Do we want to table this for Jim or do we believe he'll probably be fine with it?
I think we'd be fine with it.
All right.
Yep, me too.
Considering it's ten times what the minimum bid is.
Right, I was thinking the same thing.
We have enough people here and I believe everybody's gonna be on the same page. I'm going to abstain from this vote just because I have a lot of ties with the Barkers.
That's a good idea.
So, you know, even though I don't work for Charlie, I do work with his son and I do live in the area, so. I'll let you guys take part in this vote and I'm gonna step back from it.
I move that we accept the bid from Mr. Charles Barker for the property at the corner of Park and Leeds for the bid of twenty-five thousand, five hundred.
Seconded. All those in favor?
So you're still the chair, you can have.
I still can say that? All right, good. All right, so that is the winning bid. That is a good thing. All right. Up next, we have the county assessments.
Um, sorry, can I just catch that?
No, no worries.
Our county tax this year is two hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred twenty dollars. This is just the annual assessment that you folks need to move on and sign and we get to send back to them. Two eighty-eight. One twenty.
What was the dollar amount again before I go dig it out?
Two hundred eighty-eight thousand?
One hundred and twenty.
So I would move that we accept the county assessment, the amount of two hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
My seconded.
All those in, no?
You wanna say something?
No. All those in favor?
I just wanted to ask, do we have a choice?
No.
It's one of them.
Yeah.
It's a good thing. I'm sorry to be rude to say something myself.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
I just thought I'd ask.
Up next, we have code compliance and civic development officer job description.
So this is for the, um, proposed new full-time position that is gonna be code enforcement slash. proposed new full-time position that is gonna be code enforcement slash planning. So, uh, we did need to add some language into, uh, actually, I never have found a code officer job description in the drawers, I'm sure it's around somewhere, but it's probably rather old and outdated anyway, so I did add, uh, planning language in here as well as, um, some economic development, um, stuff as well. But goes, goes along with the planning, so, just, just for a, a starting point.
I, the only question I had is on the second page, down on a one, two, three, four, five, whatever down, where it starts with attends and staffs all meetings of the planning board, et cetera, and then it goes down to renders professional planning and legal advice. How do we define legal advice? As it pertains, as whatever they're wanting, as it pertains to the law?
It should be pertaining to the town's ordinances, which, which are kind of our law, but yeah, we probably shouldn't have that word in there.
Because they don't, you know, legal advice, he's not a lawyer. And, you know, he could possibly give someone the wrong info. And say, well, I was told that it was legal, and then find out that it wasn't, and it falls back on the code enforcement officer.
Do you have a suggestion of how you want to change that?
Well, I like what you said, as it pertains to, uh, as, as it pertains to the ordinance that the, the state, county, town. I mean, as a code enforcement officer, he would be familiar with the legal aspects. But it's just that wording.
Yeah.
You know, giving legal advice, it's like, hmm.
So, do you feel more comfortable with renders professional planning and, uh, professional planning advice as it pertains to town ordinances? And just get rid of the and legal?
I think it would be safer if we dropped the and legal.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I, I, sorry, I said that backwards. So it would say renders professional planning advice as it pertains to town ordinances?
Exactly.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I hope I'm not being nitpicky, but.
No, well, that's.
That just hit me.
Well, that's why many I's make it easier.
But other than that, it's, I think it's, it's a wonderful,
Well-written.
Well-written job description.
We doing anything with this, other than just kind of presenting it to us for now?
Um, that's up to you, if you're comfortable with it, you can prove it tonight, or you can.
Well, I would like to move that we accept the code compliance and civic development officer position description with the, uh, aforementioned correction to, uh, that one particular part of a legal.
Another second?
Hold on a second there.
All those in favor? Passed? And then the big thing for this new position is, one, it's almost impossible to find good part-time help to fill the, we have been through three or four since I've been here, and we spend more time without one than we have with, since I've been, since the last four years. And if we're gonna be able to develop the town, we have, it's a good idea to have somebody working with the, with the planning board and, and hopefully grow this town, you know? The more, the more business we get in here, the more it helps our value, the more it helps, you know, can bring down taxes in other areas, so, you know, we gotta grow the town. So, and that will go out officially to a vote. Alright. Then we on to warrants. I move to approve payroll warrant number eight, and, yeah, just number eight. And general fund warrant number fifty-five.
Yeah, I got over anxious and added the number nine.
That's alright.
Before I had to email.
That, that looks like my bank account right there, it's just a.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Not opposed?
Oh, I didn't hear you say it all.
I, I thought it again.
You thought it, okay, well, I approve.
Alright, good.
We didn't, doesn't have Jim to use.
Yeah, well, you know, you gotta have the old guys to keep the young people in check. Alright, we have no quit name?
I can bulk you.
Yeah? Uh, we have no abatements, no supplements, board discussion? We have any board discussion?
Just that, I, we have about five more hours of Mardi Gras, so, you know, be careful with the laissez-le-bont temps roule, and I hope everyone has a meaningful moment.
Well said.
I'm good.
I can't top that.
Alright, managers discussion?
So, just a few things, uh, I did receive word from the, uh, any CDC corridor, uh, their construction is complete. Uh, they are asking, however, that people, um, give them a little bit time, a little bit more time this spring to make sure that all the seeding and mat removal and, um, the other maintenance that they need to get everything in place is, uh, is completed before we start using that, and they have moved all the mats?
Yes.
They have, yeah, okay. Alright, um, Fourth Economy, the, uh, agency that's been selected to do the master, recreation master plan will be in town on, uh, next week, on the eleventh and twelfth, uh, they'll be doing community interviews and looking at all the, the physical recreation assets in the three towns. And they'll start working on the, the community mapping and the asset mapping on that, so, uh, there is an invitation that's gone out to, um, potential stakeholders, um, so, if we missed anybody, please let us know, and, uh, we'll get you into one of those informational sessions. Um, we do have a, excuse me, sewer rate workshop scheduled for March nineteenth at five o'clock here. And, uh, history night planning is, uh, going to start pretty soon. Uh, I do know they have, uh, mat and the barn burners reserved already for the night, so hopefully we have as good of a turnout as we did last year. Um, and at some point, I probably will be asking to close Water Street. Uh, last year we ran out of parking for the cars, there were so many, so, we gotta figure out how we're gonna organize that and lay it out. That's it.
Still the plan to have it over here again this year?
Yes.
Please, it does, it makes a huge difference to any of us who have businesses on this street.
Yeah, we gotta, yeah, Doris and Jerry Orf and I gotta kind of put our heads together and figure out where we're gonna put the, the food vendors and the, the library folks and the pulp and paper museum folks, uh, and the, and the band, of course, so, but, we'll, we'll come up with a plan. That's it.
Alright. Department heads.
Uh, we put the heavy load, uh, posters up yesterday, and they took effect, uh, today for the warm weather we've got coming and the heavy rain. So, that's both the only thing I've got.
By the way, Bill, the, the road clearing
Right.
has been exceptional.
Thank you very much.
Exceptional.
I will pass that on to the guys.
And it has really been, I watch them, you know, up and down Moose Hill Road, I mean, they're diligent.
Yep.
So, excellent job.
I will pass it on to them, thank you very much.
Yes, like I said, the roads, you guys, I think you guys always do a really good job, so.
It's been a tough month and a half, I would say.
It's been kind of miserable, just keep you busy, busy, busy.
Nights and weekends is what the storms have been all this time.
Exactly, it's a plot.
Yep.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, pretty consistent, you know, Thursday and Saturday into Sunday.
Keep you awake on weekends.
That's alright. Doris?
Hi, have nothing tonight.
Wow.
Log drives will be starting back up, but I, I'm not ready for that yet.
Uh, resource fair, you have information on that yet?
I need to work with.
Okay, okay, never mind.
Tammy, did you have anything? No?
It's been a long week.
It has?
Already.
Only a few more days, just. Alright, do we have any public comment tonight?
I was curious on when the roads are posted, how are they enforced? Because we seem to still see the same larger trucks go through.
Who is that up to, Bill?
That is a police department, but it's, uh, if the roads, um, if it's below thirty-two, they're still legally allowed to haul.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when they go through early in the morning?
Early in the morning, it's still legal.
Sneaking through there?
Yeah.
That's what they do. Get it in the morning, where you're still legal.
And we can look at all that request, um,
The dimension lumber company, they ask for a permit every year because they do employ people. And the other one is the woodmill. They're the only two that, uh, ask for a permit so they can get steel and products into their facilities.
The woodmill, which one did you, the?
Paul Wilson's. Yeah, one by Ali Barnes Autobody.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and we seen it off, and he just called it, well, last I knew it was called the woodmill. Oh, no, I think it's Innovative Industries now, actually.
Okay, alright, you say, uh, say Ali Barnes, alright, I had to work. Alright, we have no executive session?
I move that we adjourn.